We'll call the order this December 9th meeting of the Mopiller Planning Commission. And first we have to approve the agenda, and we'll take a look.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Okay, great. Motion approved, second by Marcella. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved. Next is comments from the chair. So yeah, we could use this time to kind of update where we were. We had talked about doing some more quarterly meetings last time, so I'll start with what I did, and that's today, well, before today, I met with a local artist who puts on a lot of events and is involved with the city in teaching classes, and she's kind of has her hands in a lot of things and about what's going on with art. Kind of based on a lot of the things from our conversation, I started an outline of a chapter for the city plan on art. Right now, it threw in basically three aspirations, which were public art, and then like supporting private art, and then supporting art appreciation and art education. So those are three aspirations to start with. And then I tried to put in some goals and then some strategies for some of those things, so you can take a look. But this is meant to be the starting skeleton for a framework. So from here, I figure we'll involve the Public Art Commission, I'm sure, in big ways. I've got a couple of things in there, but this is definitely meant to be a thing to be wordsmithed and edited and played around with, so really it's just meant to be start something. Mopiller Alive, I imagine, would be involved with this, so we can get feedback from those two, and then what else are we thinking?
Mopiller Alive puts Art Walk together, right?
Yes, I think of Mopiller Alive does a lot.
Yeah.
And I think Dan Grober also, whether it's Mopiller Alive or not, I think he's involved with the art classes that the city's already doing and some other things. I put in a thing about affordability, by the way, in the art education. I think that's something that to put in there to make sure that art, that the city's providing art classes that are affordable for everyone. I think it's a good opportunity to make the, you know, more inclusion, inclusive city plan.
So in terms of, go ahead.
Isn't there just a children's art space? Hmm, like have this thing maybe that I saw that was established around here, but I can't remember. Maybe I need to go back and look.
I don't know, the library does events. They're similar, but...
Tell me where that is.
In VCFA? Anything with them? Could we have that?
Oh, that's true.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, the high school does a lot of events, and in terms of art education, the Senior Center does a lot with that, too, so incorporating all of the various people who are doing this.
Yeah, I didn't put anything about Senior Center specifically in, but that is something that this artist talked to me about. So we can take, we can take a look at that, and yeah, once we start getting some feedback, I think we can, like, I'm comfortable with us handling that chapter. Look, we don't need to outsource it, but we'll see how it goes.
I feel more comfortable with a lot of comment from the Public Art Commission.
Oh, yeah. Like, that's one entire aspiration, at least, that that commission could flush out. Okay. That's all I had. Did anyone else take a look at the materials online on either housing or historic preservation stuff? Have anything to say?
Well, I looked at the historic preservation stuff, but I guess I was expecting to see, like, track changes and notes, so I didn't realize it had been changed, so I can't. But I looked at it substantively, because I was like fooling around with like, am I not getting the comments to show up?
Yeah, after I edited, started to edit it, I started realizing, well, we'll see. If you guys want me to, I can do a compare documents and show the difference between what you had last time and the current version that we have. Or we can just build off of this one. Probably not a big deal to do a compare docs if you guys wanted that.
I think the most important thing is just that the HPC gets the comments we had and makes sure that they answer them directly.
Yes, yeah.
Comments as well as the changes that we actually recommended?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, everything. How does everyone feel about the accessibility of the website right now? Like, if you took a look, like, you...
I haven't actually been there.
I'm not very, I don't, I'm not knowledgeable about this, but I just wonder if, like, is, do we feel like the public can access it and find what they need to kind of follow some of what we're doing?
So the public can access it off the city website?
If they click the right thing, they go to the city plan, right? And then within the city plan...
I'm not sure the specific path to get there.
I mean, should we just, can we just ask a couple people not on the commission to test it? I mean, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, I think it would be good to see. I worry a little bit about making sure it's accessible. It might not be, it may not be a lot of demand right now to access it, but I think so we can move along, it will be.
Right, yeah.
And I am meeting with Stone Environmental with John Adams tomorrow morning, because they're working on the ArchGIS hub, which is similar to what John had been working on with some of the website page things. So we may get that set up. If we get that set up, that'll, you know, within a month. Stone is trying to do one for each, one page for each of the city departments, and so we're going to do our planning one on the city plan update, so we'll see what they come up with. I'm not very tech savvy on those, so I'll look to them to kind of go through and make some good suggestions, whether it's Stone or whether it's John. You know, obviously John's really good at the GIS stuff as well, so that might be an easier link to kind of get there, so.
So Stone is doing one on each department?
For each department, yeah. DPW, they did the snowplow one.
Oh, great, okay. I haven't looked at that. So that is online?
Yep.
If they move along through that, yeah.
Yeah, I think they've got one for, for DPWs was for winter operations, so they wanted to explain to people how winter operations work, so people can understand and don't get, they hopefully will get fewer questions in the office if people can go and understand, you know. "I don't understand, somebody just came through with a plow and just plowed down the middle of the street, doesn't make any sense." You know, "Why'd they do that? They didn't even plow the street." It's like, well, there's a system to it. They send one that goes up the middle, and then they send the other trucks that come through and clean up the edges, and there's just a system that they have for doing it. Or, "Nobody's plowed my street," and actually you can look online at a real-time tracker that'll tell you where the current snowplows are and what the snowplow routes are. So it's a pretty informative page, webpage, and so we'll, we will get one for planning. And we'll do the city plan, so we'll probably have more of an interactive map like John was trying to set up, so people can add comments, or what they like or don't like, or what, you know, what do we want to maintain or evolve or transform, in terms to give people an opportunity to comment there. So that's the, that's the thought behind the story map. But I'll be meeting with John and the folks from Stone Environmental tomorrow morning on that.
Yeah, so we can definitely wait.
So that could, that may replace this Google page, so.
Yeah, so we can wait to see that, then. Okay, that's great.
Are your concerns just about the interface is actually what it is? Because I just, just to sort of put a fine point out, like, I feel like the interface is a little, it's not what I would expect it to be, but it's, I don't think it's bad. I think it's just different than, like, the first couple times I've used it, I'm like, this just seems a little...
I had a little trouble getting there.
Yeah.
Which then I started thinking about all the different people and all the different residents and all that, you know?
Yeah.
I don't know what the average amount of tech savviness is in the world these days.
So if you didn't approach it the way a public person would, how did you approach?
I tried both ways.
Oh, okay, you did.
I tried, I tried going in normally, then I also tried just using the link. The link, of course, was pretty easy.
The link provided to us, yeah.
But then, but then you get to the point where you've done it a few times, and you don't know if it's, is it easy for me because I already know what I'm doing?
Because I know where I'm looking.
Right, right.
So that's why I'm kind of asking the group, you know?
Yeah, it could probably be streamlined a little bit, but I think for right, especially where we are right now, it's probably okay.
Well, if it's, I mean, if it's changing big, in a big way, then we can wait and check that out later. That sounds great. Sounds really great. All right, that's all I have. So on the agenda, the next thing is the minute, or no, the next thing is general business, and we have, we have no members of the public here to discuss general business that's not on the agenda, so we'll skip by that, and then we'll go on to consider the minutes. Everyone gonna take a look at the minutes from last time?
Sign move approval of the minutes.
All right, first and a second. Everyone ready to vote? Okay, all in favor of bringing the minutes?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And so approved. Next item we have is to continue, it says to continue our discussion of the Historic and Cultural Resources chapter before we, so, so where were we?
We were on the last page.
We were on the last, so, so, until we get comments, so we can, we can try to pick up where we were, and Mike, if you could help us with that. But I'm thinking maybe we can also tonight move on to housing, what I'm doing.
Yeah, and I didn't know at the time I put together the agenda whether other people would be working online to add comments to the historic change. And if people had put in comment, maybe we would talk about them. But if people haven't had a chance, and we think we were done with the comments for now, then we could just move on to housing, and the Historic Preservation Commission will see the comments and the questions tomorrow night. That's tomorrow night's, their, their meeting.
Mike, can you just, I'm fine with actually moving on to the housing piece, but can you just, for all our benefit, can you give us like a 30,000-foot view on what changes were made from the September versions to the December version?
I don't have, all my notes in front of me.
Then don't worry about it.
The big change was really, we eliminated the cultural, we pulled that out, so it's not historic and cultural, it's just historic.
Yeah.
And then I think there were just a number of relatively smaller changes. We moved a couple, I asked a couple of questions. I think there was one on what was up with the, oh, no, I'm trying to find it. Nobody really could understand what, what it was they were asking for, really, about the themes.
Oh, yeah.
And so, yeah, the historic themes on front, I think it was identify and develop historic contexts or themes, and that was, the Historic Preservation really wanted that for, for their walking tours, they just weren't clear about saying it. So they wanted to be able to establish themes so they could do the walking tours. So I took that out of aspiration A and put it into aspiration B, and then kind of tied it in, in there.
So it was really just a lot of, if I remember so correctly, it's just a bunch of line item stuff that can be captured pretty easily and are compared?
Yeah, I thought so, and I gave, the, the direction I gave to, to Meredith meeting tomorrow with Historic Preservation was really to start to go through, and I think you guys had some comments about, you know, maybe we should pick one of six, or how many of these would we be doing, you know, like in the strategies on the first page, there are six or seven bullets there. You know, are we really intending on doing all seven, or should we have, I think John's suggestion was, you know, we should do at least one of these, or at least two of these. So that way, we've got a benchmark that we can go through and say, after eight years, did we do what we had set out to do?
So that, I'm sorry, so that list of questions that we came up with at the last meeting have not been presented to?
They have not, they're, they're meeting tomorrow night.
But Meredith has that list of questions.
Yeah, Meredith has that list.
That's kind of what I was wondering.
Did we actually set any benchmarks, or did they set any benchmarks?
They didn't set any benchmarks. And some of them we don't need to, for continuing policies or redoing policies, those are, those really don't need a benchmark, but I think the reference was in cases where we had a list of things, we should, you know, hear a list of eight things we could do. Well, let's go and say how many of them we intend to do. And then the other thing they were going to do is to kind of go through and pick out the things. The other, I think you guys had was to talk about what are the priorities, higher, medium, and low priorities, and what are the, perhaps what are the costs, or who is going to do them? And so they were going to go through and try to look at things like compile an oral history, is that, is that a high priority, a low priority, is that not really matter? And so, you know, and then to have them think about, are you really going to do all of these strategies, or are there really things that, these are nice things that we would eventually like to do, but, you know?
In the next eight years.
In the next eight years, we don't plan on doing this. Well, let's take that out for now, we can put it in a box that says, these are ideas for another time, but, so that's what they'll be discussing. I don't, I don't know how much they'll get through tomorrow, but they've got that list.
Do we want to ask them to set some kind of benchmarks, just to sort of hold their feet to the fire if they're important things, particularly around establishing some of their programs? With that?
I think I would leave it up to them. I mean, if they narrow it down so they only have two on the list, if they go through and say, "Look, the only thing we're going to work on is doing a historic inventory of the meadow and getting that in as a historic district." Great, I don't think we need to prioritize or have a benchmark, we're only going to say we're doing one.
Do you know where we stopped last time? I don't actually have my...
Because I don't think I would have added this note otherwise, the federal funding review?
Yeah, so it looks like we got through onto the last page, and whether you've got the new one or the old one, it'll just make a difference what page it's on, but it looks like we did, if you've got the one that's over there, at the bottom of page three, we've got the last time, so that's why you're on page four.
Yeah, no, I wanted to have the continuation of all the questions.
So the bottom of page three, adopt the policy that any section 106 response involving historic resources will be provided to the Historic Preservation Commission. So that was the last one that we did, and so the rest of these we didn't. So continue to assist property. So all of these ones that are in that list, we don't need to prioritize, these are just things, in that case, as they continue, these are things we already do, and there's, it's an as-needed basis, if we get somebody who comes in and needs a federal tax credit, Kevin will write that grant application for them.
But do they actually assist historic property owners with grant writing for brownfield loans and grants?
If it qualifies for this, for a state program, we assist with brownfield loans and grants.
You do, but not the commission?
No, that's a staff, that's a staff committee.
It's a staff one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've not, it's not clear to me where that kind of breaks into just the staff, as opposed to what the commission's saying they weren't going to do.
But this is a document that articulates what the city does.
Yes.
Generally.
Yes, and that was a little bit...
It's not commission-specific.
Actually, but many of the other things are things that the commission's going to do.
Sure, but there's still an armament of the city as contemplated in the document.
Yeah, we've had that with a couple of commissions to remind them that the plan they're writing is not necessarily their plan, their committee plan, it's the city plan, and we're asking them to participate in writing that. And so in some cases, the items that are going to get done, maybe things they're not, they are not doing.
So ultimately, the strategies will be assigned as to a responsible party?
Yeah.
And, okay.
Yeah, and some of it from the standpoint of, of staff are things, it's less of an issue now than it was a few years ago when, when we were looking at staff cuts, but we want it to be able to go through and be able to capture what are all the responsibilities that certain staff members do, so if that staff member's position is cut or cut down in time, then we can reflect that and go and say, well, this person's also responsible for all of this, so. It hasn't been an issue lately, but when we conceived of this, that was something we were thinking of, is to make sure we reflect what staff does as well.
I think, like, in that vein, I think it makes some sense to replace Historic Preservation Commission and throughout this chapter with just the city.
Yeah, I think some of this, we'll go back to John's comment, on, on making sure that we have the priorities and who is going to do it and what the cost is, even if the cost is low, medium, and high, that we, within, within the strategy, initially our thought was we would have that embedded within those links, but considering we're not going to have those links done, we should instead reflect who is doing it, and a little bit of the cost, or maybe that's, you know, in a footnote at the end of the piece, but we should have a little bit of what's the priority, what's the cost, and who's doing it. And if it's staff, then it would just go down to staff.
Establishing the cost is going to be difficult.
Yeah, in some cases, that's, that's going to be a tough one. We'll have to establish a, something that'll be consistently applied throughout the document, what's a low value, you know, less than $1,000, what's a medium value, you know, $1,000 to, I don't know, we'll come up, have to come up with some range that we would apply to each one and go and say, well, this is relatively cheap, relatively inexpensive process, or more expensive.
Can I just ask a quick question about the strategy to revise the city's agreement with the Capitol Complex Commission to administer design review rules? What is the, what are the changes that they're anticipating, or that you're anticipating?
So the issue we've had, and this has been an ongoing one for...
Years.
Years. So if, if you don't know, the Capitol Complex is an area bounded by basically Bailey and Taylor Street and Governor Davis. So within that box with the river is the Capitol Complex, and it's basically like Washington DC, it kind of cuts out and they do their own regulations. Predominantly, they just look at design review, and so we've had some running disputes with them about who's doing what. So we've, we have recognized that their position is they are completely autonomous, no zoning, nothing applies to them. You know, there's a problem in that eight privately-owned parcels are in that as well, so, and they don't look at a whole bunch of things, so they have no rules on parking, they have no rules on setbacks, they have no rules on, you know, most things that you would see in a set of zoning regulations, because they're only looking at design review. So we've been trying to go and argue that, you know, yes, you guys claim you're exempt, we don't think under law, they have that broad of a thing. So we've gone through and tried on multiple occasions to negotiate a compromise, I would say, "Look, we'll regulate zoning for these eight parcels, but we won't do design review. You guys will do design review, we'll regulate everything else, we'll look at stormwater, we'll look at impervious cover, we'll look at..." They want nothing to do with that. They want to be completely exempt, but they don't do stormwater runoff, they don't do, you know, things that we're just like, you just, you don't get to do this like this anymore. So pretty much the only thing we have is flood hazard, and actually what we have in practice been doing is we do regulate the zoning, and we do exempt design review because that'll go through the state. So we pretty much are operating under what we think the agreement should be. If it's a state property, we'll give you full exemptions on everything, except flood hazard, because it has to be that way. But we have pretty much said, whatever you, the state, want to do, you're welcome to do, but for those eight parcels, we're going to enforce zoning. We would like to have that in, in the agreement, but they haven't been willing to come along with it, but it's just been, it's just been a thing, it's just bureaucracy being bureaucracy.
So I didn't realize that they didn't have stormwater.
No, they don't, they don't regulate, they just do design. They don't look at parking, how many parking spaces, they don't look at stormwater, they don't look at, they don't look at, there's no setback requirements, there's no height requirements, there's no, they just don't have any regulations, they just have a design review manual, and so we're like...
Who makes that decision, the state?
It was a decision by the Attorney General. Well, it's the Capitol Complex Commission, who is staffed by BGS, and so they've, they are, they, they don't want to have to deal with the city, and that's fine, but they rely on a very old Attorney General opinion, which is based on state law that has since been replaced and doesn't exist anymore. So they believe their exemption is X, but if you actually read, read the statute, that law no longer exists and was replaced in 2005, with one that's just says they're exempt from design review, which is our position, that looks pretty clear. So it's just been, you know, we figure, we keep waiting, every time there's a change of administration, we kind of go back in and say, "We'd love to do this," and we've had varying degrees of support to make changes, but we never could nail down a final approval on that, so.
So have you been working with the Capitol Complex Commission?
Sarah McShane did a lot when she was the zoning administrator, so she was working a lot, trying to push that through, but we just couldn't get enough common ground, so we eventually just dropped it and figured, well, well, we've got drafts and we're willing to reconnect with these at a later date, but, so we'll see. So that's why we've just kept the revised agreement in there, mostly because, you know, it's not that critical, we do what we think is right anyways, and they haven't either figured it out that we're doing it, or...
What do you mean, you do what you think? You mean, those parcels still come in?
Yeah, so for example, I think VNRC recently did some work on their building or moved to, or is looking at another building, so they're in the Capitol Complex, they're one of the privately-owned parcels.
Oh, okay.
So they came in, they pulled a zoning permit from us, we issued the zoning permit. The state would have, if, if we had asked the state, they would have said, "No, you have no authority to issue a zoning permit in our, in our complex."
Therefore, and they don't require a zoning permit at all? There is no zoning?
They would say there is no zoning permit, there is only the Capitol Complex approval, which is not recorded in the land records and is not... In which case it becomes very difficult to defend and enforce, and it's just, they're not, they are not set up to, to, to administration, and it shows when you get into the details, the nuts and bolts of, you know, why don't you guys make a decision and give it to us? Then when somebody comes in and does a title search to sell that property, they will see all of the decisions and everything can, you know, but...
It could, it could always hurt those property owners.
Yes.
Not follow the law, and then something happens.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we try what we think would be the appropriate thing, which is on these eight parcels, we work to have them get all their zoning approval, and then we tell them, "For a design review, you need to go to the state," so.
And so this is asking for the city to have an opportunity to comment on design review for historic resources?
To clarify the roles, yes. So the first, what I was talking about was the first piece, to clarify the roles and responsibilities, and the Historic Preservation Commission has requested the second.
Okay, because right now, it's all with the state?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and they would like the ability to be able to provide comment.
Seems like there's a lot of other ways to approach this. One would be to ask for a new AG's opinion.
Yes, we could, and we worked with our attorneys in coming up with our recommendations when we came through, and really our attorney's opinion was, you know, let's, let's pick our battles and pick our places where we...
Yeah, I mean, it's not great to be in between the politics of the AG's office and the governor and BGS.
We figured there'll be, there will be a time that will come up, and then it will make sense to reintroduce it. You know, if there's a change in administration at some point, or just a change in who's running a certain department, that it might make sense to just go through and say, now might be a good time to reintroduce this conversation.
There's a lot more in that strategy than I realized.
But it's a key piece from historic protection and historic preservation standpoint because it is our, you know, most of our, most historic buildings, our most iconic buildings, I guess, are there in the Capitol Complex. And we really don't have very much control over that area.
We talked about view sheds and much of it was view of the Capitol building.
Yeah, but it's usually from views from outside the Capitol Complex.
But looking at, yeah, right.
Looking into the Capitol Complex.
So, we want to make sure we're maintaining something we want to look at.
But they generally do a good job with their buildings, so we haven't had any interest in getting involved in their things.
But the Preservation Commission does?
They wanted an opportunity to comment on projects, which I think is, I don't think is necessary to be in here because I think Historic Preservation technically could, the Capitol Complex Commission is a public body and their meetings are warranted, so they could just have somebody who has access to that agenda in order to keep an eye on the agenda and provide comment when a project comes up that they want to comment on.
Well, so the last couple of things here, the continue to participate, Certified Local Government and Designated Downtown Program. Is it, Mike, you think this is the most appropriate place to mention those things? Do you think it's fine to lay the plan out like that?
Well, I mean, in this case, I mean, these are, these are just the continues, I mean, we're already a CLG. CLG only applies to Historic Preservation, so this would be the place to put that in. The Designated Downtown Program can apply to a number of chapters, and it will probably be in a number of chapters, but there are a lot of programs within the Designated Downtown Program specifically targeted to historic structures. Yeah, I would, I would keep them in, and I like, I mean, and it's your plan ultimately. I've been thinking to just continue to put it into the areas where it's appropriate. If we're talking about economic development, you know, that's another place where Designated Downtown Program applies and we'll have a recommendation to continue to participate in the Designated Downtown Program in that chapter as well.
Unless anyone wants to revisit anything, we can table this for now until we get feedback, what we're looking for. So, with that, we can move on to the housing chapter.
I didn't put them over there because I didn't know which ones we get to, and if I hand them out, then I've got to go and reprint them for next time, so.
That has not changed.
This, this has not changed.
Okay, I've got this already.
I might have this one.
You might already have that one too, all right. Oh, does that say historic?
Yeah, yeah, oh, no, this is historic.
I've got one.
Some of the, I almost got mixed.
Do you have November 22nd?
This is historic, this is housing.
Do you have November 22nd housing?
Yeah.
There's a housing.
Just the current erosion, the November 22nd one's the current.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, all right, there we have it. You can have all of yours.
Thank you.
Can I bring up the question that I emailed you, Mike? Which I don't think is a, but, so there's a relatively newly formed homelessness task force in Montpelier. So, I thought if possible to get their contributions because they are thinking of, you know, how the city can address this issue. And Mike just brought up the question, I mean, obviously, some of this may relate to housing, although I think a lot of it is going to be more community services slash shelter space, which whether you consider that housing or not is a tricky question. But, I mean, I'm happy to just send them the format of the goals, aspirations, and see, you know, see where they get on it, but I don't know.
Usually, I've been meeting with them, meeting with groups when they get it, just so they don't feel too
Yeah.
left out, left out there.
Okay.
I can see what their schedule is and see about.
They meet at Wednesdays at noon, and they are meeting every week.
Oh, every week, okay.
But, yeah, I'll, maybe I'll just, or maybe I'll just ask one of them to email you about a good time to come because there's a lot, there's a lot going on in that group.
Yeah, I know they've been doing a lot of budget discussions, and I've caught a couple of committees that are really kind of focused on budget stuff that.
Yeah. So, I'll ask someone to follow up with you, okay. I just wanted to follow up on that.
So, yeah, the question that came up was really about whether it would be appropriate to have these discussions here in the housing chapter. And, you know, my reply was, you know, some of these things just depend on where we want to put them. We're going to have a chapter for community services. Is what we're doing for the, through the homelessness task force, a community service? Or is it housing, or is there, you know, and that's going to be really dependent on what they're doing, I think.
I like the idea of making sure, at least in the housing chapter, that we are clear that there's room in this city for these things, for shelters, that is something that, you know, is desirable. I think, I may have mentioned this before too, I think that, I think it will be important for our plan to have at least something about treatment housing for drug addiction because that's, there's a shortage of that in the state, and there's almost none south of Burlington. So, for us to say, hey, there's a place in our city for that, it seems like those two things go together. Housing's a good place for it.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I think it may be something that comes in as a goal or something, or a strategy under D, which is really our, it's really our, Montpelier will have housing for all. And affirmative, affirmatively further fair housing. And it really is a large catch-all that really is, it's really meant to be just that. We, you know, everybody who's a resident, who lives here in Montpelier, you know, we want to have, we want to meet that need. And for anyone who wants to move here, we should be having housing available. You know, we're obviously having housing shortages right now, you know, even for people who can afford it. Even if you could afford it, you couldn't live in Montpelier because there's just not housing that's for sale.
So, what we're talking about is some kind of a temporary housing regarding, excuse me, the shelters and things like that.
Yeah, I don't think there's a goal or a strategy directly reflected in that, so we should, you know, think about how we would put that in. But, you know, not just, you know, as Kirby was mentioning, not just for homelessness or transitional, but the housing for drug addiction. And, you know, I'm sure the Justice Center would comment on people who are, you know, reintegrating into society from, through the prison program. And those, you know, what, you know, we've, we should have the housing that kind of addresses all the needs that regionally, we should, you know, we shouldn't be deferring our, you know, a portion of our population to say, well, they should, they should find their housing in Berry. It's like, well, no, there's, percentage-wise, we should be accommodating a fair share of all those housing needs, whether it's transitional housing or group housing or whatever it is.
Can I just write off the bat on this document? So, this was submitted by the Housing Task Force, right?
Yeah, I do the, I do the framework and I come up with things and then they work on them.
So, just a quick question, because there's also the Montpelier Housing Authority? Right? So, can you explain to me again what the difference between those two are and what their sort of focus is? Because I get them confused, I know that they're both.
So, the task force is a, it's actually an ad hoc group. They're not actually technically appointed by city council there. And they reflect a number of the key partners, including the Montpelier Housing Authority and Downstreet and Interfaith Action and Legal Aid and a couple of other ones that are in there.
Okay.
But the Montpelier Housing Authority is a specific organization that used to be part of the city, probably back a few decades, and then since is kind of separated out into its own quasi-governmental. We don't fund them, they don't, they're not, they don't, they're not city employees.
Yeah. What's their mission?
And they authorize Section 8 housing.
Yeah, they do this Section 8 housing. They're quasi-governmental agency. I don't know if they're actually their own municipality, kind of like the schools become their own municipality. I don't know if they technically have that status or if they're just.
Yeah, and they're administering federal funds.
Yeah, they're almost 100% federal funds. They operate certain housing, I honestly, unfortunately cannot off the top of my head name them here.
Well, the Pioneer Apartments, is that what it's called, and the Roundabout?
Yeah.
Yeah, there are some specific housing groups that.
Yeah, there's fixed, yeah, they've got some that are fixed housing vouchers, and then they do the housing, well, they have the housing vouchers and then they have the fixed units.
So, the task force is an ad hoc group that has representatives from like the Housing Authority and those other legal aid and all that? Or they're just an ad hoc group that is understood to represent those interests? I'm just trying to figure out.
They are the, so the group, if you were to go to a housing task force meeting, you would find the executive director of the Housing Authority. Downstreet has, not the executive director, but one of their employees goes to all the meetings. You know, we've got Polly and, I mean, I could go through and probably name most of them. But, yeah, so everybody usually sends, actually, Jack McCullough, who's now a city councillor rep, he's, he was actually there as the representative from Vermont Legal Aid. Jen Holler is there, I think, representing Vermont Housing and Conservation Board.
But I don't think, I mean, I don't think there, there's no roles that have to be represented.
No.
It's just people who are into housing.
Into housing.
I'm just, I was just curious what the composition of the group was and where they sort of. There's a lot of housing nerds in Montpelier.
And they all come together, and, yeah, they all come together, and I think they started in 1999 to go through and say, you know, what can we do to help housing and further housing and.
That's helpful, because I was just, when I was reading the document, I was like, who are these guys exactly?
But they do act on the housing, the revolving loan fund? They are administering?
I think there's a, sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry, I can't help but keep it. I think there's a separate committee, yeah.
Yeah, there's a trust fund committee.
Trust fund committee, okay.
Which does, which only meets like once a year.
So, what is the role of the Housing Task Force then with the revolving loan fund?
They, they don't. So, we've got, they've got, so the trust fund technically now has two funds. We've got the housing trust fund, and we have a revolving loan fund. So, we actually have two. So, they, they will come up with programs. So, usually what happens is once a year, they will establish a program that'll go through and say, oh, we should have a program for first-time homebuyer. And this is what it's going to be, and Downstreet makes the proposal that goes and says, hey, look, we've got funding for a first-time homebuyer program. If the city matches those funds, we can put those together and we could help people buy homes in Montpelier. It's a very expensive place. The city council approves that, or the trust fund looks at it and says, yes, this furthers our housing goals, makes a recommendation to city council, city council approves it. It then goes to Kevin, the community development specialist in my office, to actually administer the program. So, once that's done, we do all the processing. You know, if you want to buy a house, you come in, you ask Kevin, Kevin, or actually, you go to Downstreet, they run it, and then they give all the stuff to Kevin, and he looks at all the stuff and says, yep, you check all the boxes and we cut a check and bring it to your closing. So, that's, so that's the way that the programs work. And what the task force would do is to help write guidelines in how we should spend the money and then make sort of recommendations to council. The task force also makes recommendations for how much money we should fund into the, into the housing trust fund. So, they'll be meeting, I think, on Wednesday with city council to go through and make a pitch for how much money should go in the budget into the housing trust fund. It's kind of an annual, annual thing in how we should be, what are things we should be recommending, so. They kind of blur a little bit. So, we've got, most of the stuff goes through the trust fund, but we do have a revolving loan fund that was created last year from leftover money. So, we had community development funds for decades, and we had recycled them, and then we finally reached a point where we asked the state if we could just take the funds out of federal oversight and just because it had already met all the obligations, and then move them into individual funds. So, now, they're looking at how should we spend these revolving loan funds that we have? Because they have been very difficult for us to use because they were stuck with these old restrictions. So, we had a housing preservation grant program that people in town were eligible for. But in order to get access to the funds, you have to prove that you can't afford to pay back the loan, basically. So, it ended up with these weird restrictions that, you know, if somebody was in a position that needed the help, we really couldn't help them because you have to prove that you can't get a loan from a bank. And while now that we have that restriction out of the way, we can take that money and come up with a better way of helping our community. Maybe it's a housing preservation grant, maybe it's something else, but the restrictions have gone away except that we need to use it to further housing. So, we've got a couple hundred thousand dollars that we can now use. But that's what they do.
I think one thing that came up last time was the percentage for vacancies doesn't necessarily match the number of units, is the goal?
Is that where the 240 versus 150 comes in?
No, well, the two, the 150 was for five years. That was the adopted in the EDSP, but this is an eight-year plan, so we just multiplied the formula and kept it going out for another three more years, which would be 240 units.
Yeah, the two aspects of this benchmark don't seem to quite fit.
It's, yeah, I mean, we can go through and, and look at the edits. The, if something were to have happened where we added a number of housing units and for some reason, a whole bunch of people moved to Florida, and suddenly rental vacancies went up to 8%, we probably wouldn't have as much of the second goal because we wouldn't be looking to add more housing and create more vacancies. The reason why we have the bottom is because there's a very low vacancy rate, less than 1% right now. And the question is, how can we do that? Well, our goal is we're going to increase housing by 150 units and then continue to monitor the situation. And maybe it goes up to 240 by 2028. We're just going to keep adding housing units until we start to see some vacancies.
This sort of assumes a static population then. I mean, that's the part I don't understand. If, if everything we've talked about in the past is if we increase housing, more people will come here. Therefore, it won't affect that vacancy rate at all because we have more housing, we'll just have more people.
Yes, there will be more people. The expectation is, at a certain point, you reach, you reach a point where you're adding some units, but there aren't people to fill them. So, you know, we'll add 150 housing units. You know, there's two people per housing unit, but we only add 260 people, well, now we've created some vacancies. So, we have, we have built more than.
Or else we've created some units that have a lower than 2.0.
Yeah, yeah, but the idea is we're, we're looking. Yeah, yeah, but the idea is we're, we're, we're looking at trying to get vacancies because that's what gets your... The, the pressure to increase rent comes when you have less than 5%. That's what the models will show you. So if you've got 1% vacancy, you can expect the rents will increase, which is why rents have increased faster than incomes and everything else. It's just because we don't have enough housing, so.
Do we, do we have an actual idea of what the demand is? Like, for instance, if demand is extreme, you can, you could add 100 units and the vacancy rates just stay the same? Because the demand's from outside the city, right?
Yeah.
Do we have any ideas?
I don't know if we have anything concrete that we can put our hands on. We know, for example, that to reach 5% vacancy, you'd need probably 60 units vacant in the city at any one time. And you expect that that's, they're not going to be vacant for long. I mean, there's always going to be people coming in, people going out. It's not the same units vacant for, but you'd expect to have about 60 units that would be vacant, so.
I mean, if I could, what usually happens for housing projects, you get a market study. In the market study, we'll look at how many households are in the area, do a certain like percentage of who's likely to move, how many people rent versus own. So it's like an, I mean, that's like the tool, I think. And then there's a lot of anecdotal evidence that you'll hear from realtors or, you know, landlords or stuff like that. I think that's how people get at demand. Sorry if I interrupted you, but...
Yeah, you have an absorption rate that they look at. And that's true whether you're talking about a commercial, you know, when, when Fred Conner, Pat Malone is working on a commercial retail project, they're going to have this thing in the back that they'll go and say, well, our absorption rate for this amount of square feet is going to probably be 24 to 36 months, so we'll build it out. It'll probably be vacant for a little while, but it'll fill up. Same thing with rental units. There's going to be an estimate. I mean, we can pretty much look at the 48 units that were built in the past 12 months that came on the market between Taylor Street and French Block. And I would bet we could call Downstreet and they're probably, if they're not booked up, they're probably pretty close to, it doesn't take long to fill those units.
You were already somewhat, some occupied during their open house.
During the open house, they were already occupied. So I think our expectation is that it would be pretty high, which is why, knowing we need at least 60 to reach 5%, assuming, assuming nobody moved to town, we just built 60 units, we'd reach 5%. They're also addressing, which isn't really reflected in here, the issue of Airbnb and some short-term rentals. We have 60 short-term rentals currently, which goes through and says, well, there's our 5% vacancy. It's just taken up with people who, apartments that could be rented out to people.
Is that Airbnb? Sorry, it's like 60 Airbnbs are registered and wow.
Yeah.
Are they registered or is that just, we just, someone got online and looked?
Yeah, we went online and looked.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Or, well, they are, oh, they, I guess they don't have to register with the city, but they do with the state now for ta, right? This day, sorry.
Yes, I believe you're right. Yeah, I think there's, there's, they, they do have to pay the additional, the taxes.
Rooms and meals.
Rooms and meals taxes. So it's one of those...
As a representative of the tax department, I'll tell you, that's confidential information.
Oh, how many, how many?
Even how many, even how many people are paying rooms and meals in the city is confidential.
Yeah, you wouldn't, I mean, the city wouldn't be able to get information from the tax department on stuff like that.
Would not?
No.
Oh, okay.
You're better off just going to the website itself to see.
Yeah, that's how we always do it. We always just go onto the, the top two or three companies and just go and look at them up. And in some cases, you can determine, oh, this is a snowbird and this is somebody renting a room within the house. So those really don't count, you know? It's kind of being more of a B and B. What we are concerned about, or they are concerned about, are the ones where it's clearly somebody has removed an apartment from...
Well, yeah, I'm interested in having Airbnbs be required to register in towns, but anyway, maybe we don't want to go down that road.
Yeah, so they, they are looking at a number of things about that vacancy rate. How can we get that 5% vacancy rate? And as I said, with the idea of 60, just to get the 5%, we know our target number has to be greater than 60.
Significantly greater than 60.
Significantly greater than 60. So they, they, that's why it came out as 150 housing units in five years was the goal. That started actually in 2017. So it's, we're still looking at trying to absorb or trying to get constructed, you know, about 30 units a year is our goal. And more or less, we're, do better some years, worse than others, but we want to just keep, keep adding more housing units a, as much as we can.
So we wouldn't get that vacancy rate until all of the units had been added potentially?
Potentially, yeah. I mean, markets change. I mean, if suddenly there were a great number of jobs created in, in a different community and suddenly a lot of people decided it was, you know, well, if I'm working in Waterbury, I'll move to Waterbury and a bunch of vacancies came up. It's possible we can reach it through other ways. But our reality and our hope is that people aren't leaving, that this is just, this is reflecting demand. You know, Berry City does have vacancies, so it's not a regional issue. You, you have available units in Berry City. We don't here in Montpelier. So it's a measure of quality and quantity.
Well, in terms of the housing units, it just seems low. It seems like a low number, but...
Oh, it's, well, it's very difficult. Having, having, you know, we looked at this number and we thought that that was a low number when Kevin and I were talking. It's been a challenge. I mean, we have a goal of creating housing, but we're not going to pick up any nail, uh, we're not going to pound any nails, we're not going to, you know, we don't, we have to encourage other people to build housing and, and how can we do that? You know, we have programs that get, get us, you know, the accessory, the ADU program will get us 10 to 15 more. But you, when you start looking about all of these different things, it becomes very difficult to, to get large numbers unless we do large projects like Taylor Street and, you know, French Block was a large project and that only added 18 units. A very important 18 units, but when we start looking at how do we get 30 a year, it's like, well, that's, you know, two French Block projects a year. How can we get the housing market to start picking up and doing, doing theirs? But there hasn't been, there hasn't been the market.
Seems like there's potential for some very large projects though, like Saban's.
Yes, Saban's, Saban's, VCFA, the parcel next to it. There are a number of places that, there's Stonewall Meadows, which is out towards, up on...
Off of?
Berlin.
Berlin Street.
Berlin Street, yeah.
So what's, what's the potential? Oh, because they have a lot of problems.
There's a lot, a lot of land that was originally subdivided, had potential for 70. If we were looking for a place to have single-family homes, that would be affordable. That would be a location that could, could take them.
So we do have some limited sets.
Yeah.
Limited sets, number of sets.
Crestview, Crestview is another large parcel. That would be probably more high-end housing. So we have, we, we do have potential. The, the issue is trying to get, you know, obviously we would love to get, you know, if, if we get a project for Saban's pasture, that could be 200 housing units. You know, we could, we could make our 150 in, in short order, but that's, we're kind of balancing that with the reality of doing modest infill through these one project at a time, adding accessory dwelling units, turning duplexes into triplexes and triplexes into quadplexes. We're not looking to encourage people to do what happens in other places in San Francisco where, you know, buy three houses and tear them down to put in a big project. You know, we don't want people coming in and tearing down the fabric of our neighborhoods. You know, we're trying to work with what we have, although we would love to get a big project that could do a Saban's pasture.
So are we doing as much as we can to encourage private developers to, to develop housing?
Well, that's kind of all of aspiration A. I mean, that kind of gives us what the kickoff for aspiration A, which is to have the healthy housing market, the supply of housing in a mixture of types, sizes, occupancies and levels of affordability. And so we go through whether, I think goal A is the rental housing and goal B is, is kind of your single-family housing, your for-sale single-family housing. And then goal C is kind of gets into discussion of the mixes of housing types and occupancies levels. So we do have a number of programs, some that we're recommending, some that are existing. So they're looking at adding a utility and infrastructure incentive program. That's kind of a little bit of a TIF. We did an example of this mini TIF for Caledonia Spirits. They needed to do some, they needed some large infrastructure. So the city went through and did the infrastructure on our dime and then through their increased water usage and increased taxes, we take a portion of that to pay back that loan. It's a mini TIF that doesn't use school, so it doesn't go through the state. It's just our local. But it helps, it, it helps to go through and take a project that, that's possible but for, it needs a certain amount of infrastructure improvement. So we've done this once, but we could certainly replicate that same idea for...
Specifically for housing.
For housing. So if somebody had a housing idea that said, boy, we could do this, but there's only a six-inch water main, we would need eight to do a sprinkler and we're required to do a sprinkler. Well, maybe, maybe we have the opportunity of using, you know, borrowing and doing this mini TIF that goes through and says that, that new building is going to generate X amount of taxes. We could take a percentage of those new taxes to pay back the loan. Otherwise, they won't build the building at all. You know, you can't build a, you know, a six or an eight-unit building if you can't sprinkle the building, so. And if they can't sprinkle the building because there's not a water line in, in the road that big enough, then we might go through and say, well, we'll upgrade the water line and you pay us back. And that's kind of a little bit of the theory.
So you actually are calling them mini tiffs?
Um, that's how we've kind of described it. But there are various tools that can be used. Tax stabilization can be used if it's a commercial housing project. So that was a new addition. So we've got the ADU program. We've got to, again, the comment before, continue to participate in the downtown program and growth center programs because those do add benefits to housing. If you're in the growth center, then you have less exposure to Act 250. And that can save you a lot of money if you don't have to go through Act 250. And then we just have a number of these unified development regulations, which are the zoning.
What does the municipal administrative procedure say?
So MAPPA, we have talked about doing MAPPA in the city for a number of years. And it would have been extremely helpful in, say, the hotel parking garage. If you do MAPPA, then you can't be, then you're not a de novo appeal to the state. So you agree to operate through a higher level of process. And if you meet this higher level of process, then the state contin, will only look at you. I don't know what's the opposite of de novo.
On the record.
On the record. There we go. So it would be an on the record review. So instead, what would happen is they would, the judge would actually take the decision. And we pretty much do enough to already qualify. We just haven't officially gone through to adopt it. And it's been an interest, because a number of projects have been sidelined in the city by, by neighbors. And so if we had a more of a MAPPA administrative process, it could help to streamline the appeal process and keep projects from getting sidelined.
So there's a certain level of development that required for that? You said we qualify.
Um, it's, it's a matter, it's a, well, we first have to agree to do it and then we just need to then find all the, the procedures that we aren't doing and start to do them. So for example, if you're going to, if we were going to, we would have to enter things into evidence and we would have to number them and then in our decisions, we'd have to number them. We don't currently do that.
Do you provide pretty robust?
We have extremely robust decisions. I mean, I think the hotel decisions were 40 pages long.
Right, but the, but the process attendant with that is pretty...
The process, I mean, some of the process things are difficult for other communities. Our requirements for process, you know, they have to be videotaped, but we already do that. They have to be, you know, there's certain requirements you have to meet. I think the issues we, we don't meet are certain, certain admission of evidence. The advantage we have, Meredith, who is our zoning administrator, is actually an attorney. She has her license in the state, so she's, she, she could do all the MAPPA requirements very easily. I think she just needs to have her checklist of what to do.
Yeah, it seems like a pretty high value, low cost.
It's one of those ones that, that we've had on that list of, boy, that would be really great if we could do that. It would, it would really help to streamline things. So some of the barriers they talk about, you know, continued the requirement of only one parking space per dwelling unit and no required parking in these zoning districts. Parking is identified as a barrier to additional housing, so that's why that's reflected here.
So they feel it's necessary to identify as a strategy that we would just not modify that in the zoning?
Uh, well, I mean, at this point, they've worded as continue, continue to do it. We want to reflect what, when we write our strategies, we want to reflect what we're doing already as well as what we should be changing. If it was felt that we should expand that, then I think we would just go through and amend that to say, continue this policy of having no parking requirements in these districts and explore expanding that to other districts or whatever. If there was a goal, from a parking standpoint, these were the ones that they felt. You know, there may be a different opinion from somebody in the transportation committee or an energy committee or somebody who may feel that we could move that other places. But for them, these were the highest density districts. We allow duplexes, triplexes and quadplexes as permitted uses in almost every district in the city. So that, that's a goal. The sprinkler ordinance was changed last year, so that's in there. Continue to support private housing projects through public-private partnerships.
Sprinkler ordinance was repealed, wasn't it?
It was only, it was amended.
Amended to...
Because it still applies to larger, okay.
Yeah.
Anything over four units.
Right, it wasn't specific to just...
Yeah, it used to be, everybody had to go through it.
Had a serious impact on housing, I would think.
So, yeah, we'll, we will, yeah, we'll see over time how much, how much impact that, that makes for new units coming online.
It was like one of many barriers, but it was a big one at least.
Well, for example, if somebody wanted to add an ADU or a duplex, they could potentially have been required just like we're previously. So it opens up the possibility of the...
A lot of the smaller infills.
Yeah, with the program that we are now administering, right? That you're administering, the accessory dwelling unit program. So otherwise, we, yeah, would have spent more money on each of those units.
So goal B talks about the for-sale housing. It's mostly your single-family homes. That six-months supply of housing is a funky number to wrap your head around, but it really is. How many housing units would we expect? You, you want to have on the market a six-month supply of housing because if it's less than that, it's the same as your vacancy rates. If you end up less than that, your prices go up. So in the past year, we've been at about two to three months. So a house will come on the market and be sold pretty damn quick. And so that's, that's why...
More affordable ones are more like make that days and two or three days.
Yeah, and that, that is counting all the other pieces, isn't it? Just... It's pretty quick that things get on and off the market. So that's why we've seen prices of housing again still going up in the city. In the past year, prices have gone up another large percentage. And we're, we're not going to get that to change until we can get more supply of housing on the market.
Is there were any discussion about size of housing in terms of possibility of increasing our supply of smaller housing? Not just rentals, but in actual residence?
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've, these guys captured the for-sale market. We, you know, I mentioned it's single-family homes, but it could be condos, it could be, it could be mobile homes, it could be tiny homes, it could be any number of...
Anything that's allowed.
Anything that you can purchase for-sale housing. That's where they look at the six-month supply and as a mark, as one mark. The, the related piece to that is you... The related piece to that is usually they want to have building lots. Usually we want to have twenty-four to thirty-six months' supply of building lots because that will help to supply the construction of housing. But we have, like, no building lots. There's no-
A zero supply.
Yeah, there's a zero supply. So that's been one of our barriers. If, you know, we kind of have to go all the way back to the kind of the basic of going saying, "Look, we don't have building lots. We can't even talk about building housing until we can start getting building lots." We have Saban's pasture, we have one-hundred-acre parcel. We don't have eighty-acre subdivided lots sitting there waiting to be sold. There's just, it's until we can get that subdivided and platted, then we can go through and say, "Well, the road's not built there yet, but it's platted, and we can talk about how to get the road built."
Is that really what the city's looking at? I mean, big parcels that need to have front-to-back subdivision. There's no quarter-acre lots here and there.
There are small ones. We've gone through, you know, some of the pieces that people are looking at. The developer, so one of the issues they've identified is we don't have a developer class. So we don't have, we're not like Burlington, where you've got a lot of companies that that's their job, is to find pieces of land, buy them, subdivide them, and build things. We don't have that class of contractor in central Vermont. So that makes it difficult for us to kind of get those projects. What we do have is a lot of people who do repairs and small projects. So, I mean, the people that come through, there are probably ten of them that we could go through and kind of pick them out, go through and say, "These are the guys who would pick up that quarter acre." Ward Joyce picks up that house on Berlin Street down from Duncan Donuts. Tears it down, it's a vacant building, tears it down and builds his duplex on that. We've got a number of people who have that capacity to buy a vacant house. So what we've been trying to do is to connect up the developers with those vacant dilapidated houses and say, "What's the barrier? Why hasn't this moved? Why haven't people fixed it up? It's vacant, it's falling down, there are trees growing out of the porch, there's, you know..." "Are the taxes getting paid?" So we'll find out, is it coming up for tax sale? And, you know, I think there are some, two properties on Charles Street that came up. And, you know, there were a dozen builders who wanted to buy that on tax sale. So we can, we just have to get those moving and get them back on the market because we've got people who will buy those and fix those up. The city doesn't have to inspire people to do that. People will buy it, fix it, and make money on it.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my question, I mean, everything is just like Saban's pasture. After that, I don't know what's left.
Yeah, we've got a couple other smaller ones that we, that we look at. There is the parcel that's next to it, the one that they're doing the bathhouse proposal on. That same parcel, the same person doing that project is also looking at housing along Berry Street. That would be another opportunity. We don't have a lot of these larger ones.
Crestview, right, I mean, basically-
Crestview would be a very big one. That's off Terrace Street. That's another hundreds of acres, big. We've got-
Just so I understand, is that, is that on the other side from the Capitol complex of Bailey?
If you're going Bailey, so if you went Bailey and Terrace, and so the Redstone building is owned by the same person.
Okay.
And then as you go up Terrace Street towards Middlesex, there's a small road on the left that would connect you over to, basically, that hooks over to his parcel.
As far as walkability, is that, that, I've always thought of that as closer to downtown there for me, like what we, when we talk in here about walkability. It's walkable, more walkable than these neighborhoods that are already out there.
Yeah, that was his, that was one of his arguments to being included in the growth center, was that he's actually more walkable, closer to the downtown. Because he has the Redstone parcel, he now could do a development on top with a walking path through. The Redstone would have been his block before. He would have had everything that came down to Redstone building, but not technically had the legal ability to get across. So now he could develop up top with walking paths or bike paths or shared-use path that could come down.
How big is that parcel?
A Redstone?
No.
The, his parcel above, oh, that's gotta be, I mean, Alan owns six hundred acres? I mean-
Comes, goes like all the way down to State Street.
All the way, all, yeah, all the way to State Street. He goes all the way around the cemetery, all the way to Middlesex, and it's, you know, quite-
There was a sincere interest in developing it, yeah, you'd think that we could work with that.
And I think in certain cases, we, we have hoped for years that we don't want to, we don't want to do, we want to help. And so we've tried, we've been trying to find people who would purchase Saban's pasture and then come to us and say, "Here's, you know, here's what I need from the city in order for me to develop this parcel." We haven't had that. And I think the same thing with Crestview. I think if there was a proposal that said, "We'll put in X number of housing units. Here's what we need. We need the city to help extend the sewer line or build a road or something, or give us tax stabilization, or give us," and then we could go through and consider how we would help. But we, we've tried to avoid for a long time being the developer. And we'll see if that, we'll see if that changes because people have talked about Saban's pasture for a long time as, "Well, if the city buys Saban's pasture, then we could get the park that we want, and we can get the housing that we want. And considering nobody stepping up to build it, maybe we buy the parcel and then subdivide the lots, and then we sell the lots to developers." I don't know where that conversation will go. But people throw around ideas a lot. That's just one of those ideas that is out there to get through that barrier of we don't have any lots, so people won't build. But it is in the TIF district, so we've put things in place so we can make a project like these happen, so. So again, so to increase housing, first-time homebuyer downtown programs, MAPPA again, sprinkler ordinance again. Well, that's just, in this case, it's just mentioning that it's to exempt single-family dwelling units.
But it's more than that, right? But is this, this particular section only?
Uh, it's the for-sale, so I guess if it were a four-unit condo, then it would be more than a single-family.
Right, I just, that, I just, that kind of flagged something for me because it is more than that, right?
Yeah, I can see.
Correct then.
So again, the, we're, we are still looking to look at sprinkler incentives. We still want people to do it, and so that's still being included. And developing a housing market and marketing and outreach program really is to try to put all these tools in place and then try to get that developer class. And we really can't get there until we can start going out and contacting and talking to people to say, "You can make money in Montpelier developing housing."
Yeah, I mean, I guess my comments on these two questions, or two sections, sorry, goals, they could be, there's some repetitiveness, they could be combined. And I don't, you know, I don't know. I think, to me, the most important thing is to lay out a goal for number of units in a marketing and outreach program. Like, I don't know how much we need to talk about the sprinkler ordinance, but maybe that's important to remember that we, I don't know. So I also would ask them, like, how, how would the house, what's the vision for how the housing, marketing, and outreach program? To flush that out a little bit more, and what resources would be needed?
Because that does seem like a very important piece, and it's sort of like the last strategy of that goal, I was surprised, so far down.
Yeah, it was one that was added in later. It was more a matter of timing than it was ranking them by any importance. And, and I think we talked about this last time with the historic resources. We hadn't laid them out to be goal and strategy. And we talked about when we, when we get done, we may reshuffle them to go through and say, this is talked about three times. We may just say it once and have something in the end that'll reflect that.
Yeah, I mean, they don't necessarily need to do that, I'm just, just a comment.
Yeah.
A little bit clunky to look at it here.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and I second your comment about whether or not we need to continually bring up the sprinkler ordinance, but unless it's to notify people.
Well, it was, I mean, it was something that had been identified by some as a barrier. And I think because it was, happened, when this was written initially, two years ago, it was saying that we should do it. And when we did it, I adjusted it to say, "Continue to do it."
All right, so.
It was identified as a barrier, so.
Doesn't say expand it.
Yeah, it doesn't say expand it. It doesn't say, "Consider amending the sprinkler ordinance to exempt," I think is what it originally said. So, again, some of these things that are just for the maintaining the housing types, I mean, we talked about continuing. There's a little bit that might seem, why would, why does that matter so much to continue to talk about these? But we are actually, our zoning, congratulations to all the work you guys did on amending the districts. I look, in my projects, when I look at the national stuff, people are trying very hard to get out of the old Euclidean zoning of this is single-family, this is multifamily district. So all the multifamilies are together, all the single families are together, all the commercial is in one place, all the industrial is in another place. And for us, it's, we already allow single-families, duplexes, quadplexes, multifamily. And, you know, we have these great mixed neighborhoods. And so we just reflect that by saying to, we should continue to do that. Our densities are, because of the work that we did in the zoning update, to make that ninety percent rule apply. It, it makes a big difference for not having a lot of non-conformities. That other communities, when I read, as I said, when I'm reading my stuff, I'm always like, you know, these guys are like, "Did you know that you can't build your neighborhoods?" It's like, "I can."
We did that, we did that.
We already fixed that.
Yeah.
And then there has been a request from them to, to add in some incentives for the creation of senior housing projects.
Do they imagine what that might be?
They didn't get into the details, they just felt that was-
A flag?
It's a flag. It comes in in a couple of different directions, one of which is we have a lot of single-family housing that is currently occupied and underused by predominantly seniors who are, who had housing that they raised their families in, and they're now kind of overhoused. And we have a lot of younger families trying to move to the city. If we could have more senior housing opportunities, some people may look to downsize.
Oh, move out, right.
Move out, and therefore-
Yeah, we did the duplex ADU changes for that.
And that was to give them another option to go through and say, "Well, if you want to stay there, great. Let's take some of that extra space and turn it into an ADU." Or somebody may just go and say, it's, you know, "I'm going to move." And that reflects a little bit of the downsizer initiative and a little bit of just a reflection of our demographics. People are getting older, and we're going to have a lot of seniors. And we should look to get more senior housing projects. Because we're also where a lot of our surrounding communities retire to as well. Berry City, Berlin, Montpelier, we have sewer capacity. We could absorb places where, you know, Callis and Woodbury isn't, aren't going to have the ability to build the senior housing project, so. So, yeah, our first, the first aspiration really looked at the housing market. Most people are going to buy and live-in housing, that's market housing. So we really wanted to make sure we supported that. The second one started to look a little bit at neighborhoods. You know, basically, how housing comes together. And we wanted our neighborhoods to be proximate to open space and recreational resources, walkable and bikeable to the downtown with a mix of uses, complementary neighborhoods down beside it. So you might have, you know, just residential for the meadow, but you also have in a budding Elm Street area, which is mixed-use. So you would have the ability to, you know, within walking distance to a mixed-use area. So I think those were some of the goals that we were looking at, is to making sure. And most of these are really just supporting what we have for other plans, supporting the Green Plan, supporting complete streets. You know, the housing people aren't going to put sidewalks in, but they, they support the complete streets plan to put sidewalks in.
Do we have a written Housing and Neighborhoods Plan?
Uh, this is-
The last one? Yeah, under Goal C.
Approval of work plan.
Says the first strategy under Goal C is Housing and Neighborhoods Plan supports the implementation.
This is the Housing and Neighborhoods Plan.
Oh, this is it, okay, all right, all right.
Yes, this plan, this Housing and Neighborhoods Plan supports these other guys.
All right, all right.
Speaking about itself in the third person?
Yeah.
Great.
Maybe I should say, "This Housing and Neighborhoods Plan."
This plan, that would help, yeah.
I think that could be another place where it says Montpelier or the city, I mean.
Yes, yeah, I haven't gone through to make that, that change. So Goal C kind of gets, or aspiration C kind of looks at all those rules, all those things that we do that make housing and neighborhoods safe and healthy, energy-efficient, resilient, designed for all users. So this is really where we start talking about our building codes, health codes, zoning codes, sprinkler ordinance.
Mike, sorry, can I, can I just ask about the last strategy on aspiration B? Continue to allow housing above commercial uses, but there's nothing in there about encouraging it or incentivizing it. I mean, we've got a lot of vacant space still.
So, yeah, when it comes to regulations, and this was in that, that implementation strategy, the butterflies, rainbows, and unicorns, when we talked about regulations, you could go from discouraging to incentivizing to allowing to, or I guess it would be disincentivizing and then incentivize and then require. So you kind of have this, this thing along there. They just tagged, because this is talking about regulations, they pegged that one, they're just going to say, "Hey, we should, we should at least just continue to allow it." If there's a goal that says we should go more than just allowing it. In some cases, things will happen simply by allowing it.
Right.
Things won't happen because you don't allow it, so.
Well, we, if we're incentivizing the senior housing projects, I guess they are saying, they have used incentivizing previous strategies.
Yes, and, yeah, and I think in that case, they were trying to get more, work more with the planned unit developments and those types of things to be able to come up with strategies to incentivize senior housing. In this case, they were just acknowledging, again, because I've, I see beyond Montpelier, I can see, you know, when I reviewed some regulations for another community, they didn't allow two primary uses on the same parcel. So it was very difficult to put a daycare facility in a single-family home because they were both primary uses, and you were only allowed to have one primary use. It seems ridiculous, but you'd be shocked how many zoning regulations in the United States have requirements like that. Ours, we already have kind of sifted through that to say you can have as many primary uses as you want. And you can, you can mix them, so you can have residential units over your commercials.
So they were just ready, willing to allow, but not to incentivize or encourage?
Yeah.
I mean, that was basically a choice?
Yes.
That they made?
Yep.
All right. Because this would also be something that we could modify the zoning regulations to incentivize.
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to have a conversation of how we would, how we would do that.
Do that, right.
But, so, yeah, the next set, C just was where we kind of lumped together all of those rules and regulations. How would we, you know, when it comes to safety, we, we as a city, we enforce building codes on single-family homes. We don't have to. As a city, our building inspector does. We're only required by state law to do commercial, so, commercial and industrial. So we enforce it because, and this kind of explains why we, why we do that, because it establishes minimum safety, and we do it for the safety of the people who live here. Same with health codes. Improve the long-term efficiency. Improve the long-term efficiency, um, these will probably get modified a little bit to reflect what comes out of the energy plan.
Can I, I mean, with both of these, I think they're both laudable, that's great, but, and I just don't know the answer to this, but it'd be helpful, I think, for the city plan, at least for this section, and I understand that it's gonna tie into the energy plan, is if there's ways to identify how the cities can more specifically support the implementation of those plans? I just don't know what the answer to that is.
Yeah, the details of how those energy plans would be implemented are in the energy plan, and I think what it is on this side is just goes, hey, we support what they're doing.
Yep, all right.
However, they're doing it, however they get it done, we don't care.
Hopefully, we're gonna have a plan prepared by someone.
So this, so again, Goal C, same thing, it's just tying into, almost acknowledging what we already do to everybody, we, we have river hazard regulations, and we have them because it is for the safe and healthy of our residents.
Is, is Goal D, it says universally accessible, are they talking about ADA accessible?
Yes, predominantly that's ADA accessibility.
Then what is the complete streets, please come into that as a strategy? Under Goal D?
There must be.
Uh, it's both, so it's improve neighborhood accessibility and increase the number of homes that are universally accessible on the first floor, so there were two.
Okay, so that's for the neighborhood accessibility, I see, okay.
Uh, and then the last thing we, we have here is the, the more broad discussion that explains all the other things that we do. Housing for all, permanently furthering fair housing in order to protect people from discrimination, promote economic opportunities, and create a diverse inclusive community. So most of what the Housing Task Force does is really, you know, why do we sponsor French block and all these different projects? Most of that is actually coming into, into this area, affordable housing, and what are we doing to further affordable housing and fair housing?
So under Goal A strategy, the first strategy, the housing planning effort would be something that would be done by whom?
Uh, that would be Housing Task Force, so the likely candidate for that project would be the the State Street Church.
Oh, right.
Christ Church. So Christ Church has been looking to do a housing project on the back of their church, and that has been in conversation because they need, they need the parking garage, and so the parking garage both helped and hurt their project. But they worked out a deal that works for them, helps with their project to get going. So there's a number of these that will eventually need some funding, and that would probably be thirty to forty units of, forty affordable housing.
That one project?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah, that's the discussion, so.
Existing building too, I mean.
Yeah, the building would come down, the existing rectory building on the back.
But you have that kind of extension off the back?
Yeah, it's a really poor, yeah, it's a really low quality structure, and so, um, they, they're gonna keep that face, that faces State Street, that granite face, but they would build a new addition on the back.
Are you talking about aspiration D, Goal A?
Yeah, that, well, the question was, um, supporting at least one planning effort to identify community housing needs and study.
Well, yeah, I read that differently.
Oh, that, that may be the different one, that's the fair housing one, there is one in here where they talk about doing one project.
Okay.
Where there should be, that's.
Yep.
Yeah, to have two hundred thousand dollars in reserves, and that's what the two hundred thousand dollars in reserves is for.
Is for?
We, we match funds, and that's a lot of reasons why we get so many funds from the state and federal government. When we apply to CDVG funds is because we're, the city has been willing to raise money and then put them into these projects. To go, you know, it'll be a five, ten million dollar project, and we'll put a hundred thousand dollars into it, and even though it sounds like a small amount of money to the people we are applying for funds for, seeing the city's commitment to the project by putting real dollars behind it helps us get funded, so.
Yeah, I mean, this strategy of the housing planning effort to identify community housing needs, seems like it also needs some understanding of what resources, cause he, probably the Housing Task Force is not gonna do that themselves, you'd hire a consultant, I would think.
Yeah, yeah, the number of times we, I think in the past, what these have been used for in the past is, usually we do a barriers to affordable housing every couple of years, um, there'll be other studies similar to that, where we try to understand something about our housing needs. And so we wanted to reflect that in there because sometimes Downstreet or other folks will be the ones that do this, and they want the grant support, so we can be able to identify that, point to that.
So, was there a recent, was there a barrier study recently done? Did we look at that?
I think, I think there was, they, they know what it is, it may be a barrier study that comes up, it may be something else, I don't know, two thousand fourteen, there was one. I don't know if there was another one that came up.
Are these general barriers, or are they looking at just one specific?
They'll study broadly.
Okay.
And then sometimes it may be. Yeah.
If it's, if it's not a lot of trouble, could you share the last one with us, and I think that would inform our work on this.
So, um, yeah, that's the, um, the most recent. So these guys, the Housing Committee had, had this probably back in two thousand seventeen, they were the first ones, and actually sixteen, they may have been the first ones that we started working on this on, we revised it in seventeen, revised it in eighteen, and they just finished revising this a couple of weeks ago again, so. Again, perhaps we need to add elements for homelessness. We can certainly see whether they, they feel they have things that would apply to this, or, as we said, community services, they will certainly be included, all the committees will probably be included somewhere. Whether they get asked to to craft a, their own chapter or not.
Or whether it would fit into this.
Or whether it fits into this one.
So we're talking about temporary housing?
Yeah, it could be, I don't know what they're, I don't know where they are thinking, so I have to kinda see.
Yeah.
You, you also asked about the, the drug treatment piece?
Uh, yeah, I mean, that's probably one, your, your idea would probably be one that would get inserted somewhere in that aspiration D, where we, where we, where we have that. We'd probably look at, you know, is it already allowed under state law, or is it something, you know, are we looking to simply allow it in the regulations, or is it something that we are, is our strategy, our action set to sponsor, or, you know, I think we have to kinda.
I think Downstreet's done a work on this too, and then Downstreet's involved in some of this, so Downstreet would be, I think, be one that could help answer that. Do we need to incentivize or just simply allow it, you know, kind of question?
And are we not allowing it now? Aren't we allowing it in certain, in housing districts?
I think it depends, what is the technical, what is it that's being looked at in some cases? Something small, like a group home?
Yeah.
And group homes have a special definition under state law, and which one are we talking about, because I think one, one of them does not qualify, and I can't remember if it was the drug treatment, or if it is the furloughed prisoners, I can't remember which one, one of them is expressly not, you know, a group home that is for this is not considered a group home, that's a protected use, so.
I feel like Downstreet may have like a whole section on their website, I don't know if you've looked at it, but I could send that around if that's helpful, if people are interested.
Yeah, that can be helpful.
I think they, I think they have some stuff, specifically maybe even on.
And even if we've got specific things, I think if we, if we came up with a specific list that said, we'd really like to see some, some conversation or some understanding of, of this, this, and this, I think the Housing Task Force would, you know, really take, would, would really enjoy taking that as, okay, you know, maybe we should, we should look harder to make sure we you know, because when I put these things together, I'm trying to do the best I can to throw everything at it, and if there's something that's missed, that's, you know, that's what this process is for, to go through and say, you know, we really didn't tackle this, and are we you know, we will have a chapter in, as a part of the governance chapter, we've got the goals of being an inclusive community. What is it, inclusive, equitable, and engaged community, that's the mission of the, of the other committee that was created this year. And so, that's gonna be one that's gonna come up in governance and how we, we operate, but it also is gonna have to be reflected in our chapters. And we certainly don't meet that if we exclude groups of people.
Yeah, I think this is great, this is really great work. Do we have any other comments to send back to the Housing Task Force? Just those few things, so.
Do we wanna, you mentioned Airbnb, do we wanna add that to the conversation or not really?
We could, at least to the extent.
They've talked about it, and they've decided not to pursue that angle. But I haven't heard them talk about what you're talking about, so, I mean, if there's, I, I would definitely think.
Group homes.
I think with the Airbnb issue is like, to, what extent does it create a problem for housing?
I don't know, I don't know.
And that could be something we could ask about. What, what their feeling is for, how much of a problem that is.
Could be a continue to monitor.
Continue to monitor.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the question is, is what do we, what do we do with that information? I mean, once we have a better sense of what it is, with.
Cities do, cities do things to curtail, you know, short-term rentals is the, like, general term used for that.
Isn't part of it too, in terms of limiting people, taking entire apartments or, or entire homes, and then moving to Florida for the winter? Doesn't some kind of owner occupied building help to handle that?
There are a number of strategies communities have done, larger communities have had bigger issues in that, I guess, there's, there are large, there are companies now that just go through and buy, you know, you'll find entire streets that have been bought up by one company. You know, if it's down in Florida and coast or something.
Montreal.
Montreal.
If you wanna visit Montreal, you'll find an Airbnb, cause that whole city's Airbnbs now.
Yeah, but that's, that's been the issue, we, we haven't seen that here as much. A lot of ours are kind of small, one-off, two-off things.
So that's kinda getting at, we're not, we're not Brooklyn, like, and I understand.
And, and also there's, I mean, this has come up a few times in our conversation, but, you know, there's some people, I, I know of some people in town that, that use, you know, one of these websites, but it's for their whole house that they kind of share with, I guess, which is not a housing create problem really, as opposed to like these other situations that we're talking about where a, a, a condo is bought, taken off the market, and used just for Airbnb, and that's the thing, that's, that's potentially a problem, but.
But we don't really have an idea of how many of those are actually happening in the city.
I mean, it just seems to me that the underlying, the risk of the Airbnb issue is it impacts the vacancy in, you know, rate. And to the extent that we have a very low vacancy rate as it is, you know, I, I think, I just, I just think.
It's hurting our efforts too.
Well, I mean, I get that, but I mean, we're talking about, you know, aspirationally having a hundred and fifty units online in the next five years, upwards of over two hundred, over, in the course of eight years. You know, I feel like any Airbnb impact would be on the margins at best, and I, I just think that that might, it, it might create a bigger problem. Not only today, it may suck a lot of resources today, just sort of getting her arms around it, you know, it could cause bigger problems down the road, I just don't think it's worth diving into that issue. It's an interesting one, and it's probably important, but I think for purposes of getting this out the door. I just think it could take up a lot of oxygen, and.
I mean, my, my interest is more in, I mean, like, to me, Airbnbs are a sort of way that you get around zoning, like, you're, you're doing lodging in residential neighborhoods, and I, that's why I think they should have some sort of, you know, I don't know, registration process or something in the city.
Like, I tend to agree with you, but again, I, this isn't Montreal, it's not Brooklyn.
Right, no, I, I know it's not, it's not a severe issue, but.
We have a long history of housing legislators in people's homes, so we already sort of have that kind of asset, so if we start cutting the legislators out, what are we gonna do?
Well, I mean, that to me is a little bit different, but yeah, it's like a seasonal long-term rental, but anyway.
That one's, that one's even more closely aligned to housing.
Legislators should build their own apartments.
Yeah, I think they should have apartment buildings.
In the capital complex.
Up on the hill behind that speed house.
Yeah, I mean, you know, interesting anecdotally, you know, I've heard people in central Vermont generally talk about wanting to, you know, do an Airbnb for their home during the ski season, but I don't know to what extent that occurs here in Montpelier, I just don't, you know.
There's fifty or sixty probably.
It's more.
Fifty or sixty?
It's not during the ski season as much here as it is Vermont College, you know, VCFA has a one-week intensive, people come here, yeah, that kind of thing.
I mean, I think, I agree, I don't know that it's a big problem, but I, I mean, I don't know that it's a big problem, but I think not recognizing it, maybe, could that make us look like, we're just like, you know, there's, I don't know if there's a way to just like acknowledge that it exists.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, so, when, when we look back at our implementation, that the big butterflies, rainbows, unicorns, the, the plan, we have planning as one of our things that we can do, and that really is for those things that we just don't know, either don't know what to do, or, or just needs, and that's why I think in this case, we just may monitor and and plan for it accordingly, and, and just, I thought at some point, something has gotta give, so many people are going into Airbnb that at some point, you know, just economics has gotta take over, I mean, there's gotta be a certain thing where you just realize, I can make more money renting this than I can an Airbnb, and put it back into the rental market. But we haven't reached that point, and I just don't know when we will, but. And I just keep thinking, or if we got the hotel built, then we would have another eighty units of hotels, maybe that takes the air out of some of the.
If we have more Airbnb units, then their occupancy rate, you know, will go down, and so people would then maybe decide that they wanted to create, but, but so many of these are just not appropriate as apartments, so.
Yeah, and no, and that's the case, and that was when I was in New Hampshire last month, with, that was one of the classes. The planning conference I was at was all about Airbnbs, and, and because it was all of northern New England, you've got places that are, you know, Orchard Beach out to, you know, to Stowe and to us, and, you know, you can kinda see, look at these guys, and you're like, I feel bad for you guys, that's just, that's rough down there to, to see how much Airbnb is impacting things. So I feel fortunate that we don't have to try to tackle it yet. But certainly, these, these places that have, you know, these beach homes, and how much difference does it make down there, you know, if it's a beach home that people are only staying in a couple months anyways? What's the harm in renting it out for Airbnb for the other times you're not there, all right?
So maybe we could, maybe we could ask the Housing Task Force for just a comment on what, how they perceive it, whether it's a problem, that, that might help, just, but it doesn't sound like any of us are jumping at the bit to.
It just seems like, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I kinda, oh, sorry, I was just gonna say, I like your idea of putting something in there that's like, monitor the.
Yeah, like, we're aware.
Right, yeah.
I don't want us to feel, I don't want us, people to see that this section and think like, this is not aware of the modern landscape. One other question, and we don't have to address it tonight, and I don't really know how to address it, but there's not a ton of, of anything in here about rental, except kind of generally, and then there's the one conducted housing survey. then there's the one conducted housing survey to determine if rental units in Montpelier generally meet minimum housing standards. Perhaps that's enough, but I, and I, I don't have a good answer. I'm just curious.
Where is that again?
Which aspiration?
I'm sorry, it was, um, aspiration C, Goal A, and the last strategy, it's all on page four. Right in the middle of the page. And perhaps this is enough to speak to rental units, but I just felt like I should ask the question, like, do we feel like it's enough? I, I kind of don't really know, this is out of my.
For regarding what, what issue? Just the quality?
Just like, you know, quality, if there's enough than the cost and.
Yeah, the, yeah, the enough would probably be in a different, that would probably be more in the first one, aspiration A. This one was looking more specifically at, and it is a question that comes up and goes away and comes up and goes away and we never know. Some people have felt that our house, that some of our housing doesn't meet minimum housing standards, and when we kind of talk more about it, it comes a little bit more down to, you know, I can't believe I pay 1,100 bucks a month when it's for this. And we're like, that's not really a minimum housing standard, it actually meets the minimum housing standards, it's just your 1970 shag carpeting, you're paying a lot for a little.
They just haven't updated.
Yeah, it's, you're paying a lot of money for something that's probably not worth it, but that doesn't make it unsafe. And that's where we try to get back to aspiration A, where we're like, boy, if we had more, then there's competition among landlords to go through and say, well, I can't rent this unit, I guess I'm gonna have to fix it up. And when I fix it up.
Do we have confidence, though, that the housing units do meet housing standards?
And that's the question. There are some people that come forward and say that, that, you know, regardless, people are paying $900 for units that don't meet minimum housing codes. And that's a question of, you know, i- is it, is it an issue? How big of an issue is it? And we just don't have enough to wrap our arms around. So it's been proposed, it's in this year's work plan to do that survey.
How would that be conducted?
Our proposal at this point is to just randomly select a fixed number of units, select them out and just randomly go in and ask landlords, you need permission of the landlord, you need permission of the tenant to go through and do housing inspection, and we would just survey and, and examine, and we can't look at all 1,800 housing units.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
We would just pick thirty of them, go in and go and say, you know, if we, if we surveyed thirty and we find eleven of them don't meet minimum housing standards, then we have a big problem. If we surveyed thirty and we don't find many, or if they consistently have the same issue, disconnected smoke alarms, you know, it's like, well, it does meet minimum housing standards because the smoke alarm's disconnected. Well, it's probably not, you know, the solution to that is probably, doesn't need a Berry City-style rental inspection program, where they have a program that, their fire, the fire department goes in and inspects all the housing units. Over a period of time, every housing unit, every rental housing unit has to pay $100 a year, whatever it is, $50 a year to go into a fund that pays for the program to get administered and so, but it's a lot of work.
Yeah.
And if you're, if you are, you know, I've, I've been this former planner for Berry City, it is a community that had a lot of substandard housing. I mean, it was some pretty bad housing. I haven't seen that here, but I don't get into the houses as often as I did over there.
Do, do minimum housing standards include codes, fire code?
Usually the minimum housing standards are different. They're looking at something different. But usually if you end up with a rental inspection program, you will end up usually sending somebody in who's trained to do inspections on both.
Yeah, that's right, cause if, if, you know, we're only specifically saying minimum housing standards here, but what if the, you know, the other point would be minimum fire codes?
Yeah, we would, we would expect most of these probably, depending on how you're, how you're looking at it. You, you have housing codes, you have fire codes, and then you're gonna have ones that are what's, you know, they don't 100% meet it, but they're grandfathered in and, you know, so it depends where you're drawing the line on those. That's, that is usually addressed on, on, you know, the amount of work. That would usually require hiring two and a half more people.
Right, right, that's right. Chris and three other people.
Yeah, Chris, yeah. And that would be a lot of work. And so the question is, if, if you have a serious issue, it's worth the money and it's worth the time. If you don't have a serious issue, maybe we find a different way of resolving those, so.
Okay, so we're, we're out of time. Do we have a third chapter lined up for next week?
I don't, oh, we do have to ask the question. Two weeks from now is the 23rd, Christmas week.
I can do it.
Okay. I'm just.
Let's.
I sent out some feelers and.
Yeah, so it's Christmas Eve, I would say no.
Is, is, is that okay to give myself? We just skip 23rd?
The 23rd? I'm gonna be out of town anyway.
I think that, yeah, chances are we're not.
Gonna get pretty thin. Alright, so I will cancel the 23rd.
So for the meeting after that, can we, yeah, we'll have a, we'll have a, let's certainly get a third chapter and then review the feedback so far?
Yes, and so I've got a number of chapters I'm working on. By that time, I might have energy, I might have, yeah, I might have a couple of the chapters that I've been working on, so.
So the next is the 13th, yeah.
Six? Second.
January.
Fourth. Second and fourth.
Second and fourth.
Thirteenth.
Yeah, 13th.
13th.
Right, yeah, that's my automatic.
My birthday.
It's gonna be a new year when we meet again.
Yeah, next time we meet.
It's your birthday?
It'll be my birthday on the 13th.
Oh, thanks for telling us. We have to do something special like.
Nothing big on this one, this is just.
So you guys are gonna meet with Sister work tomorrow? And are they gonna, are they gonna, what's the plan with those questions? Do we have a?
They're gonna start to, we're gonna start to see where they go.
We're gonna get feedback, maybe start, and then we'll revisit and incorporate and make changes that we wanna make based on what, how they answer.
Yeah, I kind of held off on doing a real deep dive on the historic preservation one just cause I knew we had these questions pending, but, okay, we'll, we'll get that back.
Yeah, and the more I hear how you guys are, are asking questions, the more I can adjust the next ones going forward. We're kind of winging it, we're not following any, any rulebook, we're making up the rules as we go along.
Yeah, I think that's such a big project, which kind of gotta be flexible.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion from Aaron, seconded by Barb, and.
Non-deductible.
It's non-deductible, we are adjourned.